That's for the public.
Okay, we are recording.
We're just Jay and Angela. They are not, their excuse absences today.
Do we have?
Yeah. The three.
Okay, so we will call a quarter at seven oh one. One point five fifty five. We're calling seven oh one to do a special meeting agenda in advance of our regular meeting agenda. Roll call.
Pardon me. Dean Serwin.
Here.
Kenneth Gross.
Here.
Bianca Richards.
Present.
Thank you.
We have any public comments?
There are no public comments.
Excellent. Well, actually not excellent, it's great to have public comments. So we have an action discussion to designate authority to library director to close the library one morning to enable staff participate in strategic planning. It's recommended that the library board trustees designate authority to the library director to close the library for three hours one morning between June thirteenth and July thirty first to enable staff to participate in the strategic planning initiatives that we have already offered. Do you have a motion for that?
Do you want it to?
Typically, let's just, yeah.
So typically for me folks, the board.
Do you want to wait a moment for Diana?
Hey Diana.
Hi.
So Sean, Diana Malmutter, our city council liaison. Diana, to give her speed, we had just proposed that we have an action to designate the library director to close the library one morning for three hours between June thirteenth and July thirty first to enable staff participate in strategic planning and we're going to discuss that.
So for the record, typically the board has has had the authority to close the library for things like staff training day or something like this. So normally this is something that we come to the board. And the reason we're asking for you to designate the authority to me is because of the timing. We need to do the strategic planning piece with the staff probably before your next meeting. And even if it weren't for the next meeting, we need to pick a date and plan for it before. So, because we obviously want to get the public on it for this.
Do we want to have you, what is the date of our next meeting, Sean?
Is July fourteenth.
So that is eating up two thirds of your timeline though. So I can, I can see the reason for asking to give you it. Do we have the power to designate them to you?
Yeah.
I'm not opposed.
In your mind.
Does anyone have any thoughts or questions?
You might wish to consider some parameters or guidelines such as you might suggest that she select the time when she thinks it would be least disruptive to the operations of the library and that may be a minimum advance notice to patrons.
That's reasonable. I anticipated that you would select the the day that seems to have the least. I'm certainly happy to augment the agenda in the motion to include that you provide and days notice.
I mean, I think this is kind of a no brainer. I mean, it's, I think it's going to be reasonable and I don't think we need to change it.
I'm gonna, you know, give as much notice as I, yeah, possibly. Yeah, I wouldn't put any parameters on it. I think we should just approve it. Yeah. Entrusted administrative duties.
I have faith in the library director that she'll her goal is to maximize the use of the library. So I have faith that she would do so in a manner that would do that. No one feels need for a minimum notice period. You said between June thirteenth, today is June ninth.
Correct.
I think that maybe what we could do to augment that would be to say, instead of making it June thirteenth, maybe make it June twentieth. And that would automatically, even if you went right away, would thereby include a reasonable notice period.
Yeah, we wouldn't be doing it at that soon, so it's, that's fine if you want to change it to.
Why would we change it? Opposition to that?
Yeah, I mean, we wouldn't do it any less than, I go two weeks notice.
Yeah.
So.
Great. So, someone want to make a motion? I mentioned that June thirteenth is our favorite.
Yeah, I make a motion that we designate authority to the library director to close the library one morning to enable staff to participate in strategic planning. One morning, three, for three hours, one morning between June thirteenth and twenty, sorry, June twentieth and July thirty first to enable the staff to participate in strategic planning.
A second.
Sean, you can vote.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Kenneth Gross.
Yes.
Dean Serwin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so move, I move that we adjourn this special meeting at seven oh seven. Great dance, you're ready. They were the opening act for confident. And we take a moment to how about we open the regular meeting at seven oh seven oh eight. Welcome, let's call this meeting ordered. Seven oh eight, Sean, take roll call please.
Sure. Dean Serwin. Kenneth Gross.
Here.
Bianca Richards.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Also, remember, Diana Malmutter is here with us as well. Some excuse absences. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Okay. So we had a special board meeting on May twenty sixth that everyone received the minutes from that. Everyone have an opportunity. I would comment is that I prefer that they didn't include the word permanent. Reference to the discussion.
Which is which where exactly, section three?
It's, no, it's in the, in the minutes. Which I don't have with me.
They should.
The minutes said tax should be renewed in perpetuity until repeal. I'd rather just say tax should be renewed until repeal.
Okay. Sean, did you get that? Sean under section three.
Yeah, hold on one moment, renewed.
Until repeal.
Okay, so, and so how does that read then?
Overkill.
So ask for renewal of the library special tax until?
Tax should be renewed until repealed.
Okay.
You're just removing.
Okay, okay.
The word. Yeah.
Okay, I will send you the revised version tomorrow.
Great, thank you. For guidance, the emails say do not reply. So that's why I didn't reply to say, can we make that?
Yeah, that's fine, you could just, somebody can move to approve the minutes as amended. Tonight.
And it's, it's, should read do not reply at all.
Yeah.
And in a certain violation of the Brown Act, but certainly if you have proposed edits, you can contact Sean.
That's why I asked about the guidance on that. So in the future, our reply in advance. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
My second.
And? Dean Serwin.
Yes.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Kenneth Gross.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so move, item three, the section of the strategic plan.
I'm sorry, I'm so croaky. I wanted to give everybody an update about where we are in strategic planning. So on May thirty first, I had a preliminary meeting with the project team, kind of a pre kickoff kickoff meeting, which is very helpful just to kind of go over a number of things that they wanted to cover. And then Barb and Nada and I met subsequently to start kind of brainstorming and thinking about focus groups and task force members and the roles and responsibilities of a lot of the different players. And then we had our kickoff meeting with the project team, which again includes the three staff members Sean also attended. And the three consultants from Barry Dunn and Susan Kent, who's the local librarian specialist. She was not there, she's on vacation until the sixteenth of June. But her role, I think she's going to come into play very much in the engagement piece. So it's, you know, they've been communicating with her about the meetings we've been having. So she's in the loop, but we haven't actually had her in one of the meetings so far. And we've had a conversation, again, this was on June seventh, so pretty recently, we have a protected timeline, which I can email out to everybody. You know, I can email some information to you guys, which looks like, you know, obviously starting now, but their, their goal is to have the plan finished by the end of October. So it's this, the five months we anticipated, which of course, originally we wanted to do this a lot sooner, but we didn't get very many applications and, you know, we were slowed down. But the contract has been approved, designed and executed, so we're good to go and start moving forward. Yeah, it's really, I think we're excited, we, the staff, the staff, we had a staff meeting this week, city manager and the deputy city manager came to our staff meeting, which is really nice. And we talked a little bit about kind of this kickoff meeting and followed up with an email to staff, because obviously a lot of our staff were not here for the in-person meeting. And then the consultants actually sent out an email to all staff, kind of introducing themselves and asking for some feedback. Looking for like, you know, what's your ideal library, what are your thoughts, send us pictures, send us, you know, all of the ideas. So really trying to get in, like beginning to engage the staff. Because I think the staff, I mean, I think library staff, some of them tend to be kind of reserved to begin with, right? So they're not necessarily big contributors when you're in a group discussion, not all of them, but definitely there's some people who are less inclined to do that. So I think finding ways for them to engage either over, you know, the digital platform or through email or whatever is really, really great. And I also think, you know, the last time we did strategic planning, I don't think the staff felt very included. So trying to kind of reset their mindset about what their role is in all of this is part of what we have to do too.
It does sound like things are kicking off to a great start and you'll keep us up for as monthly.
Yes. Yes.
Anyone have any questions or comments for that?
If we're, if any of us are being interviewed or involved, it's going to come through you or through them. It'll come through, well, either of us, that's still what we have to kind of figure out is how there's the task force, which is a group of what they want to be, like eight to 10 people. And that, that group's role is to have three two-hour meetings. And their role is to kind of, after the engagement piece happens, the consultant would come to the task force and kind of share all of the engagement that came back and then get people's feedback. So they recommend the kinds of people that should be on the task force. So we've been brainstorming what that looks like and it might include a trustee. And then we'll have to figure out which trustee, we might have to do that over email. Do that over email. But um, yeah, that's the thing, I mean, because you can't all participate, I think we have to think about how to, how to do that. So, but they're, they're sort of advising us about what types of people. And I think from our perspective, and there's two, you know, they want a good community representation and we definitely want library users. So we have a number of patrons that are kind of regulars that we're going to approach and invite to participate in the task force. But then in addition to the task force, obviously there's three to six focus groups. There's an outreach with the friends. We can do a special outreach with the board, they can come to the board to talk to you. Whatever, whatever it is that we decide they're willing to make happen, so. Is this although going to fall under the Brown Act though? I mean, are, can't we, like, outside of all of this, we can talk about the strategic plan to each other? Even if, like, if one of us goes, but I mean, the rest of us, it's not going to fall under. No, I mean, I can, right, Diana, if they all come to the public forum, that's fine, right? Yeah.
You can attend in your individual capacities, I would suggest not necessarily sitting together as a group.
Right.
Um, because that
is.
Yeah, it's bad optics, but yes, you are able to come to any public meeting, absolutely, everybody.
And that's what I would hope is that, you know, when we have the open forum, you know, focus groups that are open to creating, that you guys would all come and participate in that.
Great. Let's move on to item number four.
I do have a specific update. I inquired of the city attorney about the questions that you guys had last time about the, the constitutional amendment that's probably not on the, on the ballot for twenty twenty two. And I wanted to share the feedback I got from them. So one of the questions we had asked was sorry. I actually asked them. The question about adopting versus imposing, like when, when is the action taken? And they said that it would be when the measure is adopted as opposed to when it's imposed. So if we act on this in November twenty twenty two, and then in twenty twenty four, they have a, if anything happened in the last 12 months, it doesn't affect us. Yeah, so that was question one. And question two. She said, with their second question was about duration and the definition of duration. And if they make reference to having to have duration, that, that what we are proposing in the language is fine. So basically no problems with that. Like.
I do understand that the committee is planning to meet with the city manager as well.
Oh, good.
And their consultant to have a joint discussion about the term.
Oh, that's good. And as far as the, the actual process goes, this, the, there will be a staff report and a presentation to the council on the fifteenth. And they will be asked to give direction on the renewal terms and that will be that. And then part of that recommendation is that they'll recommend staff to come back to council on July twentieth to put the measure on the ballot. So that's the timeline. Yes.
Public comment.
Public comment, sorry, we forgot to ask for any public comments.
So do we make public comment on a item by item?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Yes, sir, it's Ali Kelly and I am a member. A member of the South Pennsylvan, loves our library committee for measure L two thousand and twenty two. And it is. And that reflects the love that the community has of the library and the strong support we have for the heart and soul of the library. I feel that we, we should pursue the evergreen proposal. And it sounds like the city attorney and the consultants are clearing the way legally for that to be a non-issue about these doubt measures. I feel that the community will support this, they've supported the utility user deck. And we have a committee, a very strong civic volunteers, including Sahira Robb, president, you know, of this district board, and Larry Abelson and Katie Nielsen of the school district. We have a number of people who are sitting right here. And I think that we have professional consultants who know our committee and who have helped us pass four or five since you all have been working measures before.
When you say they know our committee.
They know our community, yeah. They know our committee too, as well.
When you say that, that the, we passed, the, the community passed measure, the UUT, how does that relate to another brief test?
Well, we, we were able to pass an evergreen.
So the UUT rule was done.
Was done evergreen and that was, you know, would be much tougher kind of situation. And I, I think we have the support of the community and the support of our council leaders.
And I think that the staff report for, obviously reflects that recommendation that you made. So that's, that's how, what will be presented to the council with, with other options, honestly, but they, they will, it's very clear that that was the board's recommendation.
Right. Thank you, community.
You're welcome. And can I ask, well, I can never mind, I was going to ask a question, but it's probably not appropriate for this.
And is there any other notes, comments, thoughts on this item?
Um. On the June fifteenth city council meeting, so we're, we're on the agenda. Yeah. Would you, would you like some of us to be there? Um, you can, and definitely the, it's the committee, you know, hopefully the committee will be aware. I haven't seen that the, have it yet, so I won't be sure. Tonight. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it'll come out tonight. Tonight, okay. We will ask. Okay, okay. It's probably out now.
And it would make a difference if it's on consent, I think.
It's not a discussion.
It isn't, okay. I think she said it's going to be a long meeting.
It's really long. It's going to be a big.
What number are we?
We're at the, we're, we're late.
So we're on midnight?
Yeah. Possibly, that's a very long agenda.
I know.
Can you be on journals?
Yeah. Also, well, I think it's, it's probably important to make live public comment, but you can also email your public comment. Oh, yeah. Yes, to make that way.
And again, public comment will be made on item by item.
Yes. Yes.
Question I asked. Well, great. Shall we move on to item number four, the library board trustee's accomplishments and what?
I just wanted to, you know, we talked about that at the last meeting. I just wanted to share with you the format that the city is putting that information into for the commissioners' conference. I do have a message from the chair, Dean instructed a nice message that will be inserted here. And then those, the three accomplishments and the three work plan goals are there. So if you have any concerns about how those got written up, let me know now. But otherwise, I think we captured what you had talked about at the last meeting.
It looks like what we discussed in the minutes.
Yeah.
And was anyone, has any thoughts or comments on that? Yeah, it went, went minutes. The agenda went, I did not send anything in, so it will not be going. It won't be quite as lovely, we've written this, Bianca's last time, but shall we move on to item six?
Well, I have a question. Here it says for the fiscal year twenty twenty two, it says to raise awareness for the library special tech, which is anticipated to be on the November eighth, is it? Could it not be on the November?
Again, it hasn't yet been.
Oh, that's what I forgot, they have to, yeah. So if they say no, then it's not on the.
If the city council says no, it's not on it.
I was going to say.
It's highly unlikely.
Okay, all right, so, okay, got it. But it's, yeah, we can't say that it's going to be there. Okay. Taking that. Thanks for the clarity.
We're innocent, so.
Yeah.
So item number six, library administrative, yeah, library administrative policies.
So I just thought, because we have new board members, of course, FJ is not here, but even the older board members maybe haven't looked at this lately or recently. But this big spreadsheet that you have, a paper copy of, if you need it, is basically all of the administrative policies. And if you recollect, the administrative policies used to be kind of mixed in with documents and procedural information related to the trustees. And it made it very hard for staff to actually refer back to the policy. So we undertook the effort of kind of stripping those things out, creating a policy manual separate from the board of trustees reference manual. So what you end up with is this, which is the administrative policies. And you can see how long it's been since a number of these things have been reviewed or amended. I think on average, it's about fourteen years. So we have a lot of work to do, as we've talked about before. So I wanted you guys to have a sense of what that looks like and in terms of what we are kind of hoping to focus on first are the things that are highlighted. So the green highlight, the collection maintenance, material selection policies, those the staff have been working on, but we just haven't gotten to the point of kind of getting a final draft to bring to you. But we will be working on that next. But then the code of conduct stuff is, is, you know, we've discussed that, like, that's probably one of the bigger items, because there's so many unanticipated consequences. We have to be very careful about what changes we make. So that one's a big one, and I don't know, we may do some of the lower hanging fruit before we tackle that.
Question. Brings up a question, how are changes made? Does that have to be approved or that's?
You guys approve those.
And these sections, I'm assuming correspond to a physical manual, is that available online?
Yeah, it's online, I can send you the link, yeah. Yeah, it's online and you can view it online. And I can, I'm happy to print your paper copy as well. But we do want to work on the unsupervised children of the library, because I don't think that's going to need a lot of update, but it does need some update. And then there's some low hanging fruit, like the dress code, which I believe Barb and Nada have drafted, that we need to go to HR before we come to you. And some other things that are just sort of cleanup. So there's a lot of things that we can, I think, tackle that are smaller, like we already have, as you remember, we rescinded, I think we rescinded about five policies. And then you updated, I think we've updated what? Or two, two, we rescinded five and updated two so far. So this is sort of what the task that's ahead of us, enties into your work plan. Yeah.
In terms of, so these, obviously there's sections and we can look at policy, they'll send us all the links so that we can see that more efficiently. Do we come to you with suggestions or do we wait for you to come to us?
I would say you would wait to get the policy that the staff has drafted in front of you and then you make your comments and suggestions. We go back, make the updates and bring it back again. If you have ideas on these topics, yeah, you can just send them to me. Do you know what I mean? I just don't, yes. So the answer is yes, you can send anything at any time that you want. But in some cases, I suspect that you'll need the staff to do the work upfront to give you the full picture. But yeah, certainly, if you have anything that you want to contribute on any of these, just send it to me.
Can we, not to put work on your table, but since we're declaring it as one of three things that we're going to do over the next year, can we schedule an agenda by agenda going forward? So.
Like which things we're going to do.
Maybe not to rush you, so maybe the July, the August meeting will bring us this and September will bring us that.
Yeah.
So that, so that we have them agendaized going forward and we can point to it if anyone says, well, okay, so you say you're going to do this, how are you going to do it? Well, thank you for asking, we have this.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. We, when we first kind of started on this, that was our, that was our intent, but yeah, it didn't happen. So yes, we can definitely do that. I'll need to sit down with carbon data and kind of decide which ones we'll put. We can definitely do that and.
How is it normally done? It sounds like now there's a specific focus on it. Is it typically done, you know, as needed or someone says, hey, why don't we need to update this? As opposed to being done collectively?
Well, I think the best practice would be that it's done ongoing, you know, it's done on a regular basis. And then we really look to see if there's anything that needs to be changed and that just didn't, didn't happen for a long time. So that's why we're where we are with a lot of policies that haven't been looked at for a very long term.
Yeah, these are almost, you know.
Yeah.
Older than some of our children.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think that we just didn't follow the best practice. And now we're in a position where we've got a lot of. Yeah, yeah, so I think that we just didn't follow the best practice and and now we're in a position where we've got a lot of catch up to do, which is a little bit daunting, but I think.
And I will note, most of them were adopted long before we were here.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
In many capacity, for the longer.
Yeah, I mean.
I think let's go back to.
Almost.
Probably beverage or.
Yeah, nineteen ninety seven, that's the oldest one.
Eighty-five.
Thirty-five.
Oh.
Eighty-five.
Some of these are, some of these are very old.
And it doesn't, some of them, I mean, they may be old and and still fine.
Yeah, yeah, we might find in reviewing that the reason that some of these haven't been touched in, you know, fifteen or more years is because they're perfectly fine, but we should at least get eyes on them.
Right.
And and make a conscious decision, I think you've got some notes here, that some have never been reviewed or amended. Um, so maybe what we could do is, um, for going forward, have a a new column that says review.
Right.
So that we have to know the last time.
The way that they appear in the actual document is it it has um reviewed and all the dates and then amended and all the dates, so you can see when it was reviewed and was amended and you can definitely add. I mean, I'm just, I just, yeah, I just picked the lowest earliest date so you get a sense.
Well, and Kathy, I I'm concerned, um, if you're the critical path, knowing how busy your staff is, your trustees might wish to consider establishing an ad hoc committee. Because there's some where I think it helps to know what's what other city policies are, there are others where I don't think it would be applicable, for example, personnel, I think that should be staffed, because that you need a city mindset, but some of the others. For example, the board. Or public services. I'm I'm just concerned that if staff is the critical path.
Could they take longer than it could have was?
Why don't we, what I would propose maybe is that we, I meet with Barbara Mada between now and the July meeting. We try to lay out our goals for the what we're gonna attack and then we can discuss at that meeting, creating a an ad hoc committee and what they might work on. But if we can first go to the drawing board and and get kind of a a strategy for the rest of the year, then we can get an ad hoc and decide what would be best for you guys to focus on.
And one of them, I really think we need input from the city attorney.
Yeah.
A security clearance policy for volunteers to work with children.
And that's not even, I mean, I don't even think we should have that, and I mean, there are things that should be city and HR policies, that we have these duplicate policies that I think are obsolete.
Right.
But we need to check with HR to make sure that they have the policy on their books, there's quite a number of those that are not like volunteer policies. You, yeah, the our policies should be HR's policies for the most part.
Right.
So, yeah, there's quite a few little things like, a few like that, for sure, and then there's things that we need to think about adding and maybe that's somewhere that the that the ad hoc committee could help with, which is like this last section, the service sample policy, which actually that's something we can do, because we've had that conversation with the city attorney many times, but things like um our our partners that were doing programs was gonna sell materials and if they do, just friends of the library get a percentage of that, that income. The art donation policy, which we've talked about needing. Some of these things, the donating materials policy is just something we should really have documented, that that those discarded materials go to the friends, I don't think that that's documented anywhere. Um, so I think there's a lot that you could help us with and work on.
Oh, there's an alcohol policy for the community. The library community room.
Those meetings used to be forever in error for the trustees, about what color the alcohol could be.
Yes.
No red line.
No red line. I don't see it on here.
Well, the community room policy is under public services, it's five point three. And.
Okay.
And it it needs to be revised quite a lot as well. But again, that's one that, you know, Sean and I can tackle it.
Yeah.
Um, we, it it will help to have a schedule and to know that, okay, August is such as, you know, you're gonna get it done by August. Um, we have so much going on that we don't have a specific.
Yeah, I think that'd be very.
Due date, it definitely, and and it could be that we come to you one time and say, we didn't, we didn't get it done. But I hope that that wouldn't be the case, you know, I hope that we can create a schedule that's um feasible.
Okay, well, unless it's further discussion.
It's really helpful.
Yeah, this was great.
Yeah, I know, I know, even this was kind of small, but it's better.
No, this is very nice, thank you.
I mean, this, this represents, just this represents an awful lot of work to get even a version that.
Yeah.
A a table of contents.
Well, it's it's really well laid out and we can see, uh, you know, I appreciate the color coordination. With the highlights, this is the one that you wanna move on.
The poll, it just looks like this, this is the PDF, so it just has table of contents and these are links, so you can just link them and then on back up to the table of contents. So I'll send that link back out to everybody.
Thank you.
Sure.
Item number seven, library operations update.
I don't have a whole lot of things to go over, but I um wanted to mention that um for the commissioners congress, which is uh twenty second, thank you, um, I'm actually going to be out of town, I I I have a relative surgery, so I have to be there, so Mada will be the library staff person to be there with you, which she's looking forward to, she's never gone to the commissioners congress, I'm sorry to miss it, I love the commissioners congress, because I love to hear about what the other commissions have been doing, um, so I'm gonna be sad that I have to miss it, but I wanted to let you know that. And um, quick um update, the open house, who came to the open house, the office came, Ellen came, Jean came, that's all I can. The open house was a a lot of fun, I was surprised by how many people were literally there for the open house, you know, people would come in and oh, I heard about the open house, because I really didn't think, I thought it would just be sort of lassoing anybody.
You gave them that uh punch card idea, that that was a great way to do it.
I think thirty-five people turned in their cards.
Yeah.
Um, and we registered forty-seven people for the summer reading program and we, um, what else did we do, we had twenty-three new library cards that we issued and a number of those to staff, who came from staff, couple of works came.
Yeah.
Uh, PD came, community development came, city manager's office came, and community services came, so it was it was fun, I think it was, it was a success, I mean, if you were to do it again, you might do it on a Saturday, but again, this the the origin of this was the city manager wanted to encourage city staff to be able to attend, so we did it during the week like we did. But it was, it was fun and I think people enjoyed it, so um, it was a good, good worthwhile activity, I think, and thank you guys all who came for coming, that's great. Um, the summer reading program is is zipping along, I think they had about seven hundred people signed up so far, and we just started, I mean, there was pre-registration in late in late May, but the the rich, the actual kickoff was June first, the same day as the open house. So we've only had like a week, a week and a day. Um, so I think this weekend will probably pick up a lot more kids and families. Uh-huh, so I'm hoping that our numbers will be, if not pre-COVID numbers, close, close to it, I mean, a pre-COVID numbers, two thousand people registered. Yeah, so if we can get, you know, maybe twelve hundred or thirteen or fourteen or fifteen, will be great. And next week, wonderful Wednesday program start, those are the big kind of all family, um, the theatrical, I guess, or musical or literary, whatever you wanna call it, different kinds of events for families, and those are usually really well attended, there's, you know, eighty kids and they, you know. So so if people aren't yet signed up, we'll get people signed up at those events, and storytime picks up next week also, so we'll be having storytime through the rest of June, July and beginning of August. So, summer reading program is off to a good start, I should have brought you copies that I'll have to bring the next time, the bookmark contest. Uh, bookmarks have been printed, so then those came in from the printer this week, they're really cute. Kids did a good job this year, um, I wanted to just remind everyone that you're welcome to participate in the community read that's happening. So this is uh the mayor, um, Mayor Kashiari is really encouraging, um, kind of thinking more about the Fourth of July this year. There's gonna be a big theatrical event on July third at the Sankas City High School Auditorium in the evening, um, and he asked.
To pre-register.
You have to pre-register on Eventbrite, but it's free.
Yeah.
Um, Jim and Lisa Reynolds are the production managers and directors, there, it it should be, it should be really interesting. Um, but the mayor had asked the library to participate in some fashion, um, and we tried to think about what would be the best way that we could contribute that would be kind of in our wheelhouse, not too far outside of our wheelhouse. So we decided that we would do a community read, encourage people to read this book, which is called The American Experiment: Dialogues on a Dream. Um, it's a series of interviews with all different kinds of Americans, um, the table of contents is really, you know, just if you just glance at it, it's really interesting. Um, I'll pass it around if you wanna look at it.
How many people have signed up, do we know?
I think like eight, for the, yeah, I mean, book, virtual book discussions are not
Yeah.
the most well-attended activity, but I would be happy if we had ten or so.
Do we make it easy for people to get the book, like, you know?
Very easy.
We have thirteen.
But out front.
Okay.
Yeah. We, well, we have thirteen, there's two copies still downstairs, so we have thirteen hard copies, we have two ebook copies and two audio book copies, and I think everything's checked out except for two of the hard copies. So people did check it out.
Yeah, I I got one of them, because I'm, I don't like ebooks, so I I'm joined up and I came over immediately to make sure that I got a hard copy. And they were, they were, when I came, there was four of them.
Yeah, so there's just two, I think, yeah, but they'll be back, because some of them were already checked out, there's two that were not been checked out for a long time, so I think that, um, yeah, I encourage you guys, if you wanna participate, you don't have to read the full book. That's the beauty of this book, in my opinion, is that it's, you know, you can pick and choose the interviews that are most, you know, meaningful or resonate with you. Um, you don't have to read it cover to cover like you would some of these books, so.
Yeah, and I have to say, you know, going with, you know, Candace's comment, when when you walk into the library, things are more visually accessible and you don't you don't have to like look around, like the, there was the thing right there, there is the summer reading program, there's yours, there's the, you know, your online checkout. It it, you guys are organizing the library very, very well, and it and it flows really well, so you come in, you're not in anybody's way, you know, you just it was right there, very, you know, you just grab a book and check it out, so, and I, um, and I I really liked the way the downstairs is, um, you know, the workflow is.
That's good, thank you, and what is the date of? June twenty eighth, Tuesday, June twenty eighth, at seven PM.
And you have to sign up.
On Eventbrite, yeah. Oh, and it's it's on our social media, it's on our website, if you go to the website, there's a banner right on the top of the page, you can click on the banner and I'll take you.
And I think the city put it out on their social media.
Yeah, we did, um, but we'll do some more outreach, um, but it's promising that that the copies are checked out, so hopefully some of those people will decide to.
Do we contact like Romans and say, this is the book we're doing, you have been stocking it, and then we can tell people if it's not available, you go to Romans, you can go wherever.
We.
Sure, they would like that.
Yeah, I think most people, if they can't get a copy here, it comes on Amazon, when we partner with Romans, it's typically in association with like an author talk. So we would work with Romans, they would come in and sell copies of the book and then give us a cut of the proceeds, so that's a typical partnership with Romans, but in this case, I mean, we could. I don't think, again, community reads and book talks are, people are only so interested, and so I don't think Romans wants to order a whole bunch of copies, although they probably have copies in stock, this was twenty twenty-one and it's, you know.
To, but, um, are more people those uh getting uh ebooks and the audiobooks than the hard copy books?
How?
Well. I I don't do ebooks or audio at all.
I mean, ebooks are checked out and the audiobooks are checked out, both, those copies are checked out, they're very, the the e-audio book is ninety-nine dollars and the ebook is sixty-seven, so I only.
For each, each checkout?
No, per copy.
Per copy. Yeah, each copy that you.
Yeah, so, yeah, they're more expensive than paper books.
Wow.
So I only, I bought two of each, but I'm kind of watching it to see if there's a lot of holes, I buy another, so I'll have to check, I haven't checked the holes lately, I'll should, I should probably check.
I just took them, it's on, orange cover is the same price as the purple.
Yeah. Yeah, libraries pay a lot more for our licensing. It's not even a copy that we own in perpetuity, it's a, it's a metered access, so we get X number of uses or we get it for X number of years. People don't know how.
That seems undemocratic.
It's it's how uh video used to work, the video, video sets were originally about a hundred dollars each. When they first were were getting the the market, and so the stores would pay that original price and then rent them out to people.
We should be like Netflix and just steal the pass.
That was a joke, I believe it.
Yeah, that's a joke.
Um, I also will give you a staffing update, um, as you know, we've had not enough aides, um, we brought two aides on board two weeks ago. We have two aides starting next week, and then the fifth person that's in the pipeline, which will bring us up to nine, I'm pretty sure that's nine, we're supposed to have ten, so we're very close to being fully staffed, which is huge. Um, we did um have a part-time clerk that we let go, so we have a vacancy in the clerk area, but I think we are going to probably let that be vacant um for a little bit longer until we kind of see how things settle down before we fill that. Um, and then as far as Cynthia's position who resigned, um, we have put in our requisition, but they haven't, it hasn't posted yet. The um HR department has, I think, twenty-five recruitments in their queue, so we're in the queue, um, and we just have to be patient. Um, the good news is June is tough, because Mada basically made us covering a lot of those public service desk hours that Cynthia would have worked. But in July, we have some of our subs who work in schools, who will be not working at schools, so they're gonna be able to give us extra hours starting in July, which will get Mada back off the desk, but right now she's, um, which again, that just, everything trickles down, that makes it hard for her to work on policies, because she's on the desk. But we're in really good shape with the new aides, the two that started a couple of weeks ago are really fantastic, so hopefully the next two are also be really good dynamic folks, so that's all I have for library operations, I mean, I'm sure there's other things, but those are the things that I started down to tell you guys.
Appreciate that. Uh, if anyone has any other questions, uh. So board president communications, I guess that's me. Um, I uh will point out, as has already previously discussed, I did come for a few moments for the open house, uh, I was very happy to see a decent amount of people uh coming through, uh, while I was here for a short time, I saw two or two or three different families come through, uh, seemed to be very engaged, which I I enjoyed. Um, and I really liked the way you had it set up so that it was a flow throughout the entirety of the library, including coming up here and coming into this room to get some education about the uh the history of our town. So, very well done, um, I could see how doing it on a weekend would probably uh make it more uh well-attended. And look forward to next year. Board member communication.
Sure, and I just echo everything about the open house, it was, it was very nice and, and again, I, the community read, I I think it's a, it's a great idea. Yeah, and it was easy to do, so, thank you, and then it was nice on Memorial Day, your talk of the history of the uh the war memorial, that was very nice.
Yeah, Lydia prepared that.
Yeah.
I was just deliverer.
Yeah, that's what I figured, yeah, and I think you, I think you told, you said you gave her credit.
Oh, good, I hope so.
Yeah, I think you did, yeah.
Good.
Let's roll.
Yeah, I don't have a clue to, to offer to. Standing, uh, council leaders on communication.
I don't think it will be necessary, but I will do my best to persuade my colleagues for an indefinite library parcel tax, also, it's been my experience that uh sometimes the board uh does not achieve form during the summer, do people take vacation, so you might wish to inquire now, even though you're missing two, if everyone can um attend July and August, and if not, um, you might wish to whether you wish to hold a special meeting or just skip until the following month.
Thank you, that's a really good suggestion, maybe we'll send an email and. Thank you, that's a really good suggestion, maybe we'll send an email and everybody can just reply to Sean. Yeah, that's a great idea, we'll ask about July August September, just to be honest.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh, and there's just one other thing, if you are not meeting in a hybrid fashion, then you don't need local. You can um vote by affirmation, but if you are meeting in the hybrid. Where as last month, Annie was participating remotely, then every vote has to be local.
That's right, we could have done.
Yeah.
Yeah. And did you wanna say anything about the budget or the C I P?
Um, yeah, I am really pleased to say that at this point. Uh, the budget is going to be approved, um, council has had a workshop. Um, at the end of May and then we reviewed the budget and are meeting again. At last week and um we submitted comments, but I'm really pleased to say that the library. The council approved Kathy's request for assistant director.
Library and support services librarian. Not, you said assistant director, which is not.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I just wanted to.
And we also approved some um ex-projected expenses in our C I P for the library. Including, I think it's the H B A C.
H B A C, well, that's an update I should give you as well, the, the H B A, A C, the analysis that was done, it's like thirty three thousand dollars to do all the repairs. They actually have the go-ahead to do. Most of those, they're gonna skip some of the things that are not immediately necessary, like a new thermostat. Um, but that's gonna be starting any, like immediately, so that's good, but also some additional funding for. The HVAC in the admin office that is lacking.
And what I'm really excited about is I got, cuz I'm not gonna be here. I'm in November, but I got council's commitment for R F I D, which Kathy says. She's not gonna be ready for until next fiscal year, but. It is going to be such a benefit for everybody.
Thank you, thank you for suggesting and pushing.
Yeah, I know, I really wanted to make sure.
That was that, so, thank you. So that's exciting, because that's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars and it's a big, a big project and um. Will really help us with efficiency and uh collection management and a lot of, it have a lot. A lot of positives.
Friends. Okay, so um, last month we didn't have a, a meeting, but we've been very busy, nevertheless, we keep pushing on. Um, some, the friends are, I mean, we were co-hosting um the screening of. The Far East Deep South, and I think there's a planning meeting tomorrow, maybe Kathy will speak more to that. Our June board meeting uh has been moved, so now it's the twenty third of June, it's gonna be five P M in this room for. Just, I also didn't notice that, I just got a confirmation from Sean that we can have the room. And then we're gonna be having um an all-day retreat in August, and so I've sent out a poll to find out if it's better on a regular meeting day or um. Or on a Saturday, so we'll wait to see uh what date and the location, but we will have an all-day, I think it's really important. First, take the time and spend that time to go through policies, bylaws, anything you need to do, and you just can't do it in a short board meeting. Um, so I will be meeting with Jericho Rhodes soon, um, I actually have a new volunteer, they have a better fit for us, they think, her name is uh. Sarah Bun, so she's already checked out our website, has some ideas, so we've incorporated, use our own database, so I'm really excited. That she thinks that she can make changes and then to teach us, not just me, how to use it, so. Pretty excited about that. Um, it's showcase house, we have one person that volunteered, so we'll be receiving a check for forty dollars. So next year we'll have to, yeah, I had to send them a W nine over that one. Yeah, I think what I heard was that a lot of the site, by the time that we found out about it, um, there was a lot of spots, yeah. So if we now, we know about it, then we would sign up sooner, I think, cuz I would have volunteered had I known. Yeah, yeah, um, so four of us went to serving with a purpose and um. I really think that we all came away with a really good feeling that. Even though we think that we have or people perceive that we have some issues, we are really on the top of our game compared to other friends. We have, we have people doing the positions, we are. I, I cringed with Long Beach has had the same treasure for twenty three years.
Oh my god.
I mean, that is just not good policy, it's, it's, it's just, you know, you shouldn't be doing that, but anyway, um. But I think we came away, you know, with some great ideas, but knowing that we are really doing a great job. So um, that, that made me feel good. Um, a membership report, as of today, we have a hundred eighty four members. We had an additional um one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars in the month of. Uh, May, and right now we have raised nineteen thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars, so. We are going to be sending down our reminders um for those who have not joined. If you get one, let me know, cuz you know, we're gonna try to pull that list and use that, but we're hoping that it will only go, and there's gonna be a little. Thing at the bottom saying, if you get one, please ignore it if you've already given, but. Again, I'm just gonna remind any of the you guys who have not become a member of the friends to please, we welcome you to join us. Uh, communications, as you can see, or Sally has just does. Over-the-top job with uh getting out all our local events, there are things, so there are all the newspapers, I will get them up on Facebook. Um, our newsletter continues to do well, um, we had a fifty, fifty-three percent open rate this year. Uh, this time, which is just down a little, we sent out a little early, or, but I don't think that has anything to do with it, I think. Uh, it just, you know, people are on vacation, it's just one percent, it's not a big deal, I think it's like eleven less or something like that, so. Thank you, Sally, for, for that, it always looks beautiful and. Um, the bookstore, I think they're still planning the fourth, uh, the fortieth anniversary in July, but um. I haven't heard much for that, and again, their donations were so, uh, you know, they were down last time and. I think they got so many donations and that they asked Sally not to publish it anymore, so they told me they just, there's just. Truly, truly, the donations, donations came, it was a lot pouring in, so we know that works, so.
But what was it? Good quality donations or?
But some were, yeah, there's always, there's always some, there was a lot, Discover Books did. Which I, yeah, gigantic, I was here the day they were picking out my fifty boxes or something. Yeah, cuz I, that was the open house day. I think, right, yeah, so I also attended the open house and had fun chatting up here and. Seeing one person who'd never come upstairs, and so she was a young woman and I thought, wow, that's great, so, was, I think. Um, restoration concert, so I think I mentioned last month that the Steinway piano had reached the end of its life. So um, the plan now is to sell it. And um, the current value they think is around twenty thousand, but they hope that they can maybe get some more. And the committee has decided that they will not be purchasing. A new one nor will they be leasing it, so I think on your little list here about the agreement with Steinway use, that can just be. Crossed off right off the top, so it, I mean, after talking with them, also, um, I attended their finance meeting. I just, it's not in the best interest of the friends nor. The restoration concerts for us to purchase a new piano at, at two hundred thousand dollars. And nor do they bring in enough money to cover it, and I just said, you know, I don't think that we can support an activity that we. Go and hold for ever, even though the concerts are wonderful, we just can't do that, so um, they're gonna make some changes. Um, a- as I mentioned yesterday, there was a finance meeting that we talked about and some fundraising strategies that are gonna go out and reach out to their past donors. To see if they might sponsor a concert and pay for the rental, the rental. Even though it says it's sixteen hundred, I think it comes up to around twenty four, or the twenty four hundred dollars per concert. So they may just have less concerts and involve pianos. Um, and um, and, and they're just gonna work at, they're gonna see uh what they can do to maybe cover those costs, and as you know. The musicians that play on um care half-half Steinways, that's in their contracts. So, anyway, but I think one of their main focuses um right now is really getting the possibility of a permanent stage. And I guess that she talked, they talked to you about that, so, and, and if they have to do fundraising for that, but. That's really, I think, what they're gonna focus on after, maybe the piano stuff, and um, I guess some other state concert featuring Robert Peace was amazing and well-attended. Um, they said the new Hollywood String Quartet concert was down in attendance, as it's, you know, from their past. So she really wants to, they're gonna consider maybe doing one a year, because they're our biggest expense, instead of two. Or they can have to step up their game and have more people donate, because it really, they, it's, it's like. Is it like ten thousand dollars that they have to raise or something, which is a lot of money. For the new Hollywood String Quartet, and they've done it in the past, I mean, because people either, what, what I found out is people love either. Piano or they love the violin, and so they have a lot of great donors, and it's just, you know, it's, it's. It's been COVID, so it's been tough, and they don't have as many people attending for that reason, so I'm, I'm very hopeful for the new season and members will be up and. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you so much, it was very informative. Our trustee liaison to the friends.
I have nothing, there was no meeting.
Okay, library director.
I have nothing else, unless then anybody has questions that needs to be answered, I don't have anything else.
Yeah, Ellen, it strikes me that regarding the artist, that I wonder if. The artist can petition for some sort of exception to their contract if they're performing for a nonprofit. Although I guess all of the, basically the film harmonic is a nonprofit, isn't it?
Right.
So I'm, I'm curious, but you said that the part, do we. Use artists that come from one location only or?
No, these are actually world-renowned artists that are.
And all of them require Steinway?
The, the Steinway pianist, like, only the pianist, like David, Robert Thief.
Robert Thief, I don't think the others.
So I mean, they, they make so much money, I, I am still really shocked that they come to our community room and perform for us.
So. Could we use a different pianist?
They could, they could.
We have, so some of the, the other pianists didn't require.
Robert Face is, is the only one that required.
Well, and, well, and the, the new Hollywood Street Quartet.
Yeah, people are, they're, they're endorsed.
Right, but they told me that they have to have it also, but I don't know, but maybe they can get a pianist. Who doesn't, and tru- truly, um, Robert Peace is probably not our problem so much because. They have somebody who always sponsors him and covers his fee to come. Yeah, so it's really the rental, it's really the rental of the piano, um, the rent this time, and they got lucky this time because they were two backed up back. Um, you know, two in May, so that would be their other thought is, okay, what if we do that, there's no. Charge to keep it a longer period, so what if they do one then? Yes, 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 so they're, they're thinking about it and how they'll handle it, so, it's good.
Is there any, is there any uh. Advantage for the community room to have a piano?
You do have, uh, we do have one.
Just a piano.
We do, that's used for rentals, for all the piano recitals and.
Yeah.
It's just, um, it's not of a caliber for the, for the performances.
Yeah, now this piano that we're gonna sell, for everybody else it would be fine. And, and part of the problem is, is it is a very old piano, they did not, they did not use good parts for. And pianos are meant to be played, so I guess it's just like a car when it sits for six months without anybody playing it.
I guess I'm curious, do we currently own the Steinway?
We own a Steinway.
So the piano you're talking about is a Steinway?
That no, it is no longer functional, the keys stick on it and they can't have it repaired, they tried. And so we, that's the one that they'll sell for, for hopefully twenty thousand, they paid fifty thousand for it.
It's a fifteen years, they said, they had to use out of it.
Is that all they paid? No? Fifty? They have this, I think this weekend someone's coming in to.
Yes, they is.
Again, and to appraise it again, yeah, cuz that was um. Maybe, I wrote what the new one was, it's, they're praising it because they felt that that was, oh, the twenty thousand was for a trade-in. So they would give us that towards a new piano, we were told we'd survive once. And so they feel that it's just like car dealerships, if you trade it in, you don't get the true value. So, yeah, they have somebody coming, it, at one time I thought I heard eighty.
That's what I thought.
But then they, I think they were saying.
Usually traded to get more, cuz they're, you're buying something from them, so they're giving you a, a little bit of a perk. It's just if you sell it to the dealer.
So, yeah, that's where it stands, I mean. I, I, I just don't truly know, um, to be honest with you. Uh, Kay and Kathy really made it happen. And I think with the loss of the two of them, they, they're not doing the same type of fundraising, the same type of thing, so. That's why I said absolutely not, we can't go, we can't go into a lease and I can do it to them that also. Cuz we just don't know how long this is actually going to exist and how long they'll have the passion, and if Kathy pulls a move. Does not. Decides not to do it anymore, we don't have the contact to the artist, right? So, um, there's a lot of this, but um, we'll see.
I wanted to point out that Sally um and Nancy Len designed a new bookmark. Yeah, sorry, no, 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 I forgot it. Bookstore, and they put a, a new song for the um Last Chance Books. And the other thing that I just remembered to tell you about is that the Teens Little Free Library, which is the little library with the free books in it. Um, has been installed in front of the library and um, the, the librarian who works with the teens has been out on vacation, but when she gets back. Will get the teens together and get some photos and do a little press release and put some stuff up, cuz it's really cute. And Public Works did a really nice job sealing it and getting it all shipshape and installed for us, so take a look at it, it's cute.
Well, thank you so much, um, if there's nothing else, I'd say we adjourn at eight oh seven. Guys done in, in just under an hour technically.
Yes.
Not, not, I don't want to, to swell, you know, congeniality, but uh, if we can get it done, let's get it done.
Sean, you can stop the recording.
On it.